Okay, and it is seven o'clock. So we will begin. This is the Wellfleet zoning board of appeals meeting for August 25 via Zoom. And our first case is the continuation of 2616 Fellows Preservation of Affordable Housing 95 Lawrence Road map 13 parcel two application for comprehensive permit under Massachusetts general law 40b to S 20 slash 23 development of 46 affordable units consisting of a lower village building consisting of one a 22 one and two bedroom flats and an upper village with 24 12 and three bedroom townhouses. And the board remains Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Lynch, Mr. Pomptray and myself and Mr. Lynch and Mr. Heiliger. And you are on there is our meeting agenda, not quite sure why, but there it is.
Oh, am I? Wait, I'm sorry. That's me.
That's you. I don't think we need your screen. Thank you very much. But that's very nice of you. But I think you can get out of there now.
I want to say I need to get out of here.
Okay, very good. All right. So so and Ms. Shvaloski, before we start, I would like to understand how to pronounce your last name.
The way you pronounce it is that you wait three years until my husband and I become both Bala, B A L A.
Okay, so you're Ms. Bala for now.
There you go. There you go. Keep it short and sweet.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. You may begin.
Thanks. Um, I have a question for Brian. Do you want to show your screen or do you want me to run the screen?
Yeah, I can definitely share my screen just maybe, maybe when I present the civil portion, I'll share my screen and great share for the portion that you do and.
Sure. Um, hi, everybody. My name is Vida Shklofsky. Name to be changed in a couple of years, I promise. I am a senior project manager with preservation of affordable housing. Nice to see you all again. I believe this is the fourth time. So wonderful to see all so many familiar faces. I'm working here with my team with lots of folks here from from the design team that Studio G, that's our architecture team, that's Gail Sullivan and Alex Bushkov, Corey Fellows and Jamie Carroll, he's somewhere on my screen, both with Poa. Andrew Singer is with our attorney is in fact, our sorry permitting attorney, I just waved his hand with Singer and Singer office. And then we have community development partnership Jay Colburn and Brad and Mallory might be somewhere here or maybe just Jay. Wave hi, he's our co-development partner for this project. I think many of you know us, but I just wanted to do that quick introduction to the project. Thank you, Sharon, for the introduction about the overall project, which is 46 affordable apartments at the location of 95 Lawrence Road, which is near the intersections of Lawrence Road with old of Long Pond Road near Route six where the baseball field is with the water tower. Before we begin tonight's presentation, which will focus on the civil engineering of our site of our development, I want to hand it over to Rebecca roughly about what the towns project will entail about the wastewater and the septic treatment facility, sorry, the wastewater treatment facility. And I think we've had some conversations with the board and with the folks of the public here where we've tried to be clear about the delineation of our development of the 46 affordable housing units and the site in general, where the town is running the wastewater treatment facility build out with the towns engineer. And for the purpose of our project where we're developing our residential program and you know, the public realm and all of that beautiful stuff that goes into our development, we're working with coastal engineering, that's Brian Meener and Sean Riley on the line. So again, before we start going into our civil engineering for our development, I'm going to hand it over to Rebecca to talk about the wastewater and septic program run by the town. So off you go, Rebecca.
Thanks, Vida. Good evening, board members. I'm really happy to introduce you guys to David Formato from Onsite Engineering. The town entered into a contract with Dave just about, I want to say, the beginning of the summer in June to begin the permitting and the designing and bidding out for the town's wastewater treatment facility. Dave also worked with us in conjunction with Bowler Engineering on the feasibility study for the residential wastewater options and for the citing for the 95 Lawrence project. The town's really excited to lead the charge in this project and also work collaboratively with Poa and CDP to connect to the onsite wastewater treatment facility. So with that being said, I am going to turn it over to Dave so that he can educate you all on this upcoming project. Thank you so much.
You, Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca. Madam Chairperson, if I may, David Formato with Onsite Engineering here to, as Rebecca said, to you know, provide everyone some context on the wastewater project the town is running. So thank you, board members, for having me and allowing me to be here tonight. So again, for the record, David Formato, president of Onsite Engineering. And our firm has been engaged by the town through multiple steps in this process. We specialize in onsite decentralized wastewater treatment facility, design permitting, construction oversight, that type of stuff. So the intent tonight is to, you know, provide you guys with a overview kind of where we started and where we're at currently. And then also where we're going. Certainly want it to be collaborative. So if there's questions along the way, you know, please, you know, feel free to, you know, let me, you know, know and certainly want this to be a discussion. It's not more of a presentation. It's more of an update. So with that said, this project, the genesis of the wastewater for 95 Lawrence Road essentially started with with the town looking at how to to accomplish two goals, first being affordable housing, second being how to improve the water quality in the Duck Creek watershed, in particular relative to nitrogen and that type of stuff. Obviously, that entire area is really served by onsite septic systems, including some large septic systems that serve town properties, police station, fire station, and the elementary school in particular. So in 2020, the town engaged through an RFP process, our firm with Bowler Engineering to evaluate wastewater options that may support affordable housing. The result of that report, which was generated in 2020, which many maybe many of you may have seen it is quite volume as we looked at all sorts of different options, configurations. The net results, long story short, was that the most bang for the buck was if the town was interested in doing a wastewater treatment facility that would serve not only the affordable housing, but also municipal services and then even potentially some adjacent residential long term. So in that sense, the town decided that they were going to move forward with that concept and really drive the the process relative to wastewater, because obviously if if the town was just interested in putting the wastewater septic stuff on the affordable housing component, they could certainly do something on that site relative to themselves. But because of their size and flow, it wouldn't necessarily involve advanced levels of treatment. So it would be a septic system, albeit probably with some level of advanced treatment, but certainly not to the level that you would get with a full wastewater treatment facility. So while that would be better than just a septic system, certainly wouldn't meet the stated goals, which were to actually try and improve the water quality in Duck Creek watershed. So after that process was completed and the select board reviewed the reports and made a decision on the approach, the housing RFP was issued. And in that housing RFP, it specifically identified the method of wastewater treatment and disposal that any responders to the RFP for housing would would be held to. And essentially what that RFP does is it it puts all of the wastewater design, engineering, construction, ownership, oversight on the town. The town is essentially creating a sewer district in this area. And the plan is to serve the affordable housing in phase one, affordable housing, the elementary school, the police station, and the fire station. Essentially, Poa is being given a will serve letter. They're essentially not unlike connecting to the water system. They are just basically being told with a financial contribution that's commensurate with your amount of flow that you're going to be getting out of this municipal wastewater system, you will pay that and then we will actually provide you sewer services. So same process that you the town's going to go through with the water, right? They're going to connect to the water. They're going to pay a fee for connection. And they will be getting the will serve letter. So in terms of the ZBA's involvement and oversight relative to the affordable housing, they really don't have a wastewater component because the town is taking care of that. In a perfect world, in a normal world, the sewer infrastructure would already be in place and there wouldn't really be any engineering or construction happening. But obviously, these are going to be concurrent projects that both ultimately culminate with the wastewater treatment facility being online, you know, the school, fire and police being connected in and the affordable housing being tied in. And so that's kind of like where we're at right now. And again, as Rebecca mentioned, you know, our firm has been tasked to work, we are working for the town. We are not part of the developers team. We are town consultants. And right now, we've started the process with, you know, state level permitting on that wastewater treatment facility. And I will commend the town for forward thinking because the result of this project is going to be not only that, you know, the affordable housing is going to be served with wastewater that is more advanced and treating to a higher level than you would get with a septic that they could have done. But it is also removing large septic systems from the towns, you know, the school, the fire and police, thereby improving groundwater quality. In addition, there is also plans for possible future connections of residential in and around the area. The treatment facilities going to be designed and permitted for flows and loading that are greater than those four connections. So that in the event that the town in the future wanted to remove additional septic systems off of, you know, being used to further improve water quality, that's all being done. So that's kind of where we're at and where in the process and obviously, you know, happy to turn it over to questions and, you know, I'll plan on staying on as well if stuff comes up during this, you know, this meeting.
Thanks, Dave. That's super helpful. Um, before we jump into our presentation with Brian, I just want to say one more thing about the drawings that you all received. I think it was last last week, last Friday. Just like, just a gentle reminder from last time we spoke as a group, when Jay and I came to the August 4th board hearing, we spoke a little bit about our submissions of drawings and submissions of materials and in general, going forward for today and for the future meetings. So we spoke last time on around August 4th that we would submit materials and drawings ahead of each ZBA hearing the Friday before the fact by 12 noon. So we did so both electronically and with printouts. So we sent you those several drawings in and by paper last Friday. And then we went ahead and we had our meeting with the police and the fire chiefs this past Monday, the 22nd, along with Jay Norton from DPW and the building inspector. We had a really productive, positive conversation. We were, we met in person. We went over a lot of things that Brian will show you today. And we came away from this Monday's meeting with the police and fire in the building and DPW with a couple kind of homework, you know, takeaways. So as we're working through some revisions to the drawings this week, I just want to be mindful and remind you all of that because the drawings that we submitted last Friday are not inclusive of some of the tweaks that we're working on right now as a result of our meeting on Monday. Now, Brian's going to show you what what that means, but it's just a couple tweaks here and there regarding the circulation around the lower village, the walking path and some of the the grading near the water tower of our internal driveway. With that said, getting too deep into those changes, I will hand it over to Brian and he'll walk you through the the set that we provided for you last Friday. Brian, you're on mute.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And thank you for the introduction, Vida, and thank you for having us here this evening. So I'll, I'm a civil engineer with coastal engineering that has worked on the design plans. We've iteratively gone back and forth with the architect and design team to come up with the layout that's previously been presented. And so what our drawings and design does is it builds upon what you've previously seen in more detail in terms of engineering site layout and grading. And so what what I'll do is I'll pull up our civil plan set. I'll walk you through the existing conditions plan, the grading, the utilities, a little bit about the profiles that we're proposing. And if you need to at any point during the meeting, if there's something critical to go over, you know, please let me know and we can talk about it in more detail. So I'll, I'll share my screen. I'll pull up the presentation that we put together, which is our civil plans as a PDF and I'll I'll walk the audience through what we put together, if you can bear with me for a minute.
Thanks, Frank. While you do that, Sharon, I have a question, if you don't mind, Ms. Chair. How do you want to handle questions about the wastewater? Do you want to wait until?
I wanted to ask the board just before we get started on that, did anyone in the board have questions about the wastewater? Will?
Yeah, I think David, that that was a good presentation. It answered all my questions. I'm just curious, has the town voted to fund the wastewater plant? Yes?
I can answer that. We had an article that passed last year at town meeting. So yes, and Dave actually was instrumental in helping me fill out a Mass Works grant as well to fund it. So the money is there.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else from the board about that?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, Andy.
Where is the wastewater treatment facility going to be located?
That's a great question. Madam Chair, if I may answer.
Yes, of course.
So right now, the there's two constituents to any wastewater treatment facility. There's the leaching area, which is, you know, not a very different from a septic system leaching field. And then the treatment components themselves. The plan right now, and if you, if you were to look back at the the original RFP and the evaluation work that we did for the town, the intent and the desire of the town was to to use the the ball fields for leaching. So essentially, you know, leaching under the ball fields and then reconstruct over. And then the wastewater treatment facility itself, it's essentially was schematic up until this very point because obviously really without seeing the housing development program, it was really difficult to understand kind of where things, there would be space for it. And obviously, you know, Poe has done a great job laying out the site. I think originally the thought was that the wastewater treatment components would probably be in the area of the lower village, but there certainly is room on that site to to cite them outside of that. So my initial reaction is probably be somewhere along the access drive to the water tower. Opposite the drive on that that side, somewhere over there would probably be where the wastewater infrastructure ends up going. But that's certainly open to discussion with the town input from DPW, so on and so on. So we're not really there yet, but you know, obviously, we're going to work around the development layout. And, you know, factor in what the town's looking for relative to location to finalize that part of it.
Okay, thank that that answered that, Andy.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
And Jan had a question.
I do. We had a list of waivers that were going to be requested and one of them's aboard health regulations for subsurface sewage disposal system. So I'm just a little confused. If if Poa is not going to be involved in the wastewater treatment system, why do they have to request a waiver?
Mr. Mr. Singer. Mr. Singer, yeah. Could you explain that?
Good evening, Andrew Singer, attorney for the applicant. We included, we included that because if there was not a sewer, you would otherwise have to have a septic system to service the property. And so just as a belt and suspenders, when we gave you the annotated list that you requested, we included that in there to the extent that you would have otherwise had to approve them. Because as the Board of Appeals is a comprehensive permit, any waivers, no matter whether they're zoning or not, are through your authority.
So in this case, it's we're not going to probably need to grant those two.
That was my question. I know that we're the umbrella authority. I just wondered if that would actually be necessary. That's all.
If this is Andrew again, if the decision, ultimate decision of the board reflects the fact that there's this collaborative effort on the on the sewer system, which it will, then I agree with you. I we could withdraw those from from the request because it would be noted in the decision how wastewater is being handled.
Right. Which gets to actually to my question, which is that I would assume these will serve letters become part of the comprehensive permit? That might be a question for town council. Do I include those? Do we include those letters in the comprehensive permit for the water and sewage?
I believe, Sharon, if I heard David's presentation earlier correctly, I think he might have noted that will serve letters have already gone out and perhaps Poa has already received one. Maybe I maybe I misheard that. I don't think it hurts to have that be an attachment like, you know, the list of requested waivers and plans as part of this whole.
Okay, all right. So yeah, it seems to me that that we would want that in there if we withdraw the need for the waiver there. Okay, Ms. Bacon had a question.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you for recognizing me through you to David Formato. I'm Kathleen Bacon. I was on the 95 Lawrence Road Task Force that worked so long and so diligently on the RFP. And for the for the ZBA board tonight and to David, I want to say that the 95 Lawrence Road Task Force did an enormous amount of homework and you know, a deep dive on the septic issue. It was my biggest concern going forward with the housing development for 95 Lawrence Road. My first comment to put out on the table at one of our earliest meetings was we want the best septic system we can possibly put on the site. And the reason for that, David, my my concern for that was 95 Lawrence Road is one of the highest elevations in Wellfleet. And from that elevation, we know that nitrogen effluent is is trickling down under the highway into the Duck Creek Bay embayment and into the culvert that abuts Route six there, known as Dawes Pond. And we we were losing water quality in that Duck Creek embayment. The numbers are are not good. So we looked at a very extensive IA system. We started off small, like roughly around a million dollars, maybe a million and a half. And with extensive talks with Scott Horsley in our wastewater committee here in Wellfleet, we decided to go, if you will, forgive me the expression, the full monty on the property. I think that this is is just a win-win because of the the fact that we were, we were not only going to decrease our nitrogen load in the Duck Creek embayment area, but we are attaching this project now to housing, which gave us some some very solid grant funding to go forward with. So David, again, I want to thank you for all your work on this. It's a, it's, it's, it's going to be exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bacon. Anyone else with questions on for David or for septic or water before we go forward with civil engineering? Not seeing any more hands. I don't think. Okay. All right, Vida, it's back to you and to Brian.
Thanks. Not to steal Brian's thunder, but just one more thing, after we did meet with the police and fire department, we and with the DPW and building inspector, we actually have received three court letters between Monday and today. So we have one from Chief Polly, one from Chief Hurley, and one from, I believe it's Jay Norton, that's his name.
Mr. Norton, yes, we have all three of them.
Those are all great, wonderful news that I wanted to share with the ZBA. All right, Brian, no more interruptions.
There you go, Brian.
All right. Again, good evening, Brian Weiner, civil engineer with coastal engineering. Can everyone see the screen? Okay?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Awesome. All right. So this is the the fourth meeting. I know you've had a series of meetings before this to get to this point. So we'll talk about the the work at the Upper Village and then the work at the the Lower Village and the overall project. So this existing conditions plan, so as as you're aware, there's a ball field in the middle of the property. That's really the high point of the property. And from there, it, the topography is in all all directions from there. So a few things to to note on the existing conditions plan is moving my cursor across the screen, there is an existing water main that goes from the water tower to Lawrence Road. There's an existing irrigation well for the ball field. So these two items, there's a little bit of coordination to get to the finish line in terms of design. But it but it's been well established what what we need to do. And so there'll be a little bit of detail to work out as the project moves forward. Okay, so this next sheet, be brief, it's our typical staging, demolition, erosion and sediment control. And we have construction entrances at Lawrence Road, it both the Upper Village in the Lower Village, the limit of work, we have erosion control around the perimeter to prevent any sediment from leaving the property and to control the onsite stormwater during construction. Okay, the next sheet. Everyone can see, okay, the the next sheet here, this shows the overall layout of the development, which I think everyone's familiar with in general. So we have a loop road that again, two entrances at Lawrence Road. Residential buildings, Upper Village is up here, Lower Village towards the bottom of the screen. We have parking areas throughout the site. And I'll take you to the the next screen where we'll get into more detail for the Upper Village and the Lower Village individually. Upper Village. So we spent some time looking at the layout with the team on Monday, police, fire, DPW. And we took a look at the radius of the road. We looked at the layout. Just in general, there was positive feedback. We didn't have any concerns with how the site was set up. So again, Upper Village, next next screen will be the Lower Village. Okay, so you can see here at the Lower Village, we have this radius here, which is 60 feet. We have this radius over here, which is also 60 feet. This was established as being acceptable to Chief Polly and others to make the turning radius throughout the site. To note, a couple of the adjustments that we're working on now, which will be established over the next few weeks is because of the the grade, which we'll look at on the next couple of slides, this this area proximity of the walking path to the ball field, what we're proposing to do is remove two of these parking spaces. We're proposing to shift this building back about five feet. So the rear of the proposed building lines up with the rear face of the existing building. And what that'll do is it'll it'll help out with the grading and the transition in this area that was feedback that we got on Monday. And what that'll do is it'll, it'll help out with the grading and the transition in this area that was feedback that we got on Monday. Continue on the, so the next, next few slides, they'll get more into utilities and grading for the site. Again, it goes in order, Upper Village, Lower Village. So it probably a little bit hard to read, but in, in general, what, what this is saying is the road grades are between one and two percent in the Upper Village. So it's, it's relatively, you know, easy to drive through, not a lot of slope to it. What we did with the first two units as you come into the property is these, we worked the grading into the site topography. It's, it's steep in this area towards the north. And so one of the things that the design team looked at was maintaining a thirty-foot buffer from the existing property. And that's what the limit of grading shows. And so we're able to accomplish that with these first two units by having basements and once a full walkout basement, once a partial walkout basement, the other buildings are slabs on grade. And as we continue through the site back to the, the Lower Village, the steepest portion of the site is the transition from, from the Upper Village to the Lower Village parking lot. We do have a stretch of road here that's about ten percent grade. And we talked about that at the meeting with the town departments Monday, and it's our understanding that that was acceptable. Once you transition to this parking lot area, the grade goes back to the two percent to one percent grades relatively flat. Just other things to note on this plan. Um, we do have a transition of grading to the parcel where the water tank is. So we abut the existing limit of clearing that shown. Next planet shows more detail, Upper Village Utilities. So our drainage design, how we've set it up, it's a hundred percent infiltration for roof and for pavement. We've broken out the roof separately from the pavement. So for example, this unit where my cursor is, we have roof drain towards the back. These are precast dry wells surrounded by stone. For example, this area towards the front of the units, we have a series of deep sump catch basins to a water quality inlet, which subsequently goes to a series of dry wells surrounded by crushed stones. So again, a hundred percent infiltration. We've sized, sized this for the hundred-year storm. So we're able to meet the pre-development conditions with what we're, what we're proposing for our post-development condition. As we transition to the next slide, the Lower Village, it's, it's the same, same theme with the drainage. We have the roof drain infiltration in front of the building, parking lot drainage infiltration in, in this area towards the north of the Lower Village parking lot. As we previously discussed, this, this area where the walking path abuts the ball field, we're looking at revising this grading so that there's a smoother transition and we can reduce these walls to, our intent is to get to a landscape wall height from what's shown currently. In terms of, uh, soar and coordination with wastewater, what we're showing right now is a sewage collection system. We pipe from the Upper Village to the Lower Village. The termination point, as shown, is where my cursor is here, southeast portion of the Lower Village. And so from this point, you know, however the wastewater moves forward, they pick it up from here. We've shown a stub where that coordination would occur. And so just the slides that we've previously looked at, um, graphically, you know, here's the profiles, same information. Just shown with the road grade, shown with the sewer, shown with the drain. And same profile, but lower, lower village. Um, this is the steepest portion of the, the road here, that transition from Lower Village to Upper Village, and, and then it gets to a relatively flat grade. And graphically, you can, you can see how we show the, the catch basins, the drain manholes and the pipe outlet to the underground leaching facilities. And the last couple of slides, I, you know, Vida might be able to explain a little bit more, but you know, they're I believe the same schedule that's previously been presented. So this is, you know, meeting number four. And then in a couple of weeks, the project would continue with, with number five.
That's right. You can jump back to that. I can speak to that a little bit.
Okay. And you know, if anyone has questions about any of the civil engineering portion of, of the work, happy to answer. I think we flushed out a lot of details and we had some great feedback at our, our coordination meeting on Monday with the town officials.
Yeah. So, um, speaking to that coordination, as Brian spoke about what things we're still kind of working on and tweaking, we're going to incorporate some of those changes into the materials that we're gonna, um, send to you folks next Friday, the second. So as you see here, um, we'll issue the traffic report, including a memo about the intersection at Lawrence Road, Route six and Coastal Road, right above our site. We'll issue that on the same day of, of September second, as we will also reissue drawings that will show the public realm refinements as we've been thinking through and coordinating internally and with town officials. So that's what you will receive next Friday by noon. And then we'll talk about those topics on September eighth. That's two weeks from now. Um, and then we'll still have a wrap-up meeting on September twenty-second, as spoken before.
So questions on the civil engineering portion of this?
Yes, I have some.
Okay, thank you.
My first question is, uh, how close is the building in the Lower Village to Long Pond Road? Now you said it, you're moving it closer to Long Pond Road. Is that correct?
This, the, the Lower Village. So what we're proposing to do is keep, and I'll go back to that plan. We're proposing that the new building would be the same distance as the existing building.
Okay. I thought you said you were going to move it.
Yeah, let me, um, let me go to that slide and I'll, I'll show you. So what we propose now, it was the, the new proposed building was actually further away. And when we looked at, uh, opportunities to help with correcting the grade to something more desirable near the ball field, we decided that we'd, we'd slide back the proposed to match the existing. I'll, I'll head to that sheet so you can see that in, in more detail. So this, this, um, so what, what we're showing here is the proposed building. It's, it's about five feet further away from Long Pond Road. A future revision of this plan, the, the back of the proposed building will line up with the back face of the existing building. So that, that'll be a change we make, which I think is, is reasonable and it, it helps resolve some other site constraints that we're trying to work around.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sick. I'm, I'm confused now. Which, are you going to move that building and if so, in which direction?
We, we're, we're moving this proposed building. We're moving it further south by five feet so that the back face of the building winds up with the back face of the existing building.
And what's the distance between that new, newly moved building to Long Pond Road?
Let me grab my scale and my full-size plans and.
None of those dimensions were on the plans that we were sent.
No, understood, understood.
About forty-three feet, Brian.
All right, someone's ahead of me.
Great.
Okay, that is correct. Forty-three feet. So the proposed and the existing will both be forty-three feet.
My next question has to do with those drains that you're going to have out in the, uh, kind of the, the backyards of some of the buildings to drain off stormwater, you were talking about.
Correct.
I don't know exactly what the term is for those drains.
Dry wells.
Okay.
Precast dry wells.
So my concern is, are they going to be a hazard for children?
No, so they're a hundred percent below grade. And, and so, you know, they typically have anywhere cover over it, anywhere from one to three feet typically. So the only above grade that you would see is there would be an access cover, a typical manhole frame and cover that you'd, you'd see in a road. Instead, it would be, in this case, flush with the grass surface or landscaping.
Yeah, I'm thinking of then something else that is used for drainage or this.
Yes, so you, so you won't, so you won't see it, um, other than the cover for access.
Okay. I have other questions, but I don't think you can answer them.
All right. So Will.
Brian, on the nor, on the Upper Village, are you going to put anything in place to maintain a green space between the, the back of the construction and, and the houses that are located to the north?
Yeah, so I, I.
I know, I, I'm, I just have, have a half experience. If you give someone a bulldozer, sometimes they, they throttle ahead.
Understood. I, I assume you'd talk about this area that I'm, I'm circling. Yeah, so we've shown it as, it, it's, it's no disturb beyond the limits of where you see the proposed grading. And where it's, it's at least thirty feet. So that would remain natural wooded or natural, its existing state that it is today for that thirty-foot buffer between the property line and the proposed work.
Okay. And, and on the street width, are you thinking there's not going to be any on-street, on-street parking or i- i- is there room for on-street parking?
So we're not planning on any on-street parking. The width of the road at the Upper Village is twenty feet. The width of the road at the Lower Village is twenty-four feet. And the reason that they're different is the Lower Village has the back-to-back parking. And so you need the twenty-four-foot width for the parking aisle. And so we maintain the twenty-four-foot width at the entirety of the Lower Village. And then it transitions to a twenty-foot road width for the Upper Village. So no, no parking in the, the, the sides of the road. Uh, we will have curbing. So there'll be precast concrete curb, which I, I would hope discourages parking on the sides as well.
Thank you.
Anything else, Will? Manny?
My first question is, at the lower level or whatever it is, in the back where that parking is, is there a retaining wall?
Okay, so this, I assume I have the right plan up. So we, we have, um, we have a retaining wall right now that parallels the ball field. We're working through this now in terms of reworking the grading and the transition to the parking lot by removing these two spaces here and by shifting the building to free up additional distance to help with the grading. We've recognized that this isn't the most favorable setup. So this is a, a work in progress and a design detail that we're working on now. And the goal is to reduce these retaining walls as much as possible. And hopefully get them to, uh, what we'd call a landscape wall and not truly a retaining wall.
How tall is a landscape wall?
Landscape wall can go up to two and a half feet. And retaining wall, you know, you start getting above that, it gets you into building code with fences. So our, our goal is to get back to a, a landscape wall height. And we're working with the design team on updating that location. So there'd be some, some minor adjustments and that, that should take place over the next week or so.
Okay, can you go to page one, I believe it was?
Okay.
The first one?
Sure. All right. So this is, the, the first page is our existing conditions plan in general.
The second one, I guess.
Okay.
What I'm, what I'm looking for is, yes.
Okay, so this is, um, we have, we have erosion control and demolition. And we show the, the limit of work defined by this, this dashed thicker black line. Is, is this the rate, rate sheet? And if, if not, I can search for what you need.
My question would be to Ms. Bala.
Yes, that's me.
Vida, you have to answer to that name if you're gonna go by it.
No, I know.
I talked to you and somebody else twice about that parking area. And not only me, but the board was told that that parking area would be there, that it belonged to the town, and it was a separate piece of property. Now we finally have plans, which we should have had from day one. And it says everything is to be removed. And the road, I believe, goes there. Yes. Can you tell me why you all told me twice that it would be there? You assured me. And, um, you would have paperwork that would say that.
So, so what, what we, um, show here, and I'll, I'll turn it back over to Vida. We're, uh, we're maintaining the existing parking along Lawrence Road.
It's not, it's not that.
Okay, this, this existing parking lot here. Yeah, so this, um, this is directly in the layout of the project and it's, it's been that way since we've been involved on the civil engineering side and.
But do you understand what I'm saying? Do you understand what I'm saying? When I talked to, I believe she just said she would be Bala when they got married or whatever. When I talked to her and I asked her the question about it, they told me at two meetings, it was not only me, it was also the board and the people listening to this, that that parking area, the paved parking area belonged to the town and it would be there as it is right now. And I would like to know why I was told that and made a fool. Why was I lied to? That's all. I just like a response. Thank you.
I want to respond to that.
This may be a little bit of a confusion and I'll just apologize here. When we spoke about the existing parking along Lawrence Road, we were, I was under the impression that you were talking about the stretch of parking outside the baseball field. Um, I don't know if you, if I can.
It's this area here. We're, this is a hundred percent no disturb. And you're talking about this, this parking lot.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I could, if I could just clarify, I, I apologize, sir, if there was a misunderstanding in our communication. But I think, I think we've been very clear and I'd, I'd be interested to know if other members of the, of the ZBA sh- share your understanding from our communications.
I hope so.
But we, but we, we have, we had never talked about preserving the parking lot that was, that was created for the, uh, temporary police facility when the police facility was in construction. We have always been working under the assumption that that land was available for us to build so that we did not have to cut down trees and intrude on, on, uh, uh, woodlands that, that are, that are currently on the site. And that we had always committed to preserving the parking along Lawrence Road, uh, that is. Uh, that is in front of the the ball field.
Well, I must have been somewhere else, but. I am a hundred percent sure that we talked about that, not once but twice. And you assured me that that it belonged to the town, and there was paperwork stating that. And I asked if you would get the paperwork and show it, so that we could have it on record. If we had had this plan, I would have known. That it would be removed, and I wouldn't have asked that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Will?
Yeah, just to, in response to Jay Jay's question, I think Manny and the applicant were just. Talking too too, they misunderstood ea- each other perhaps, because going in, I. I I I. I felt that that what what Jay just said had always been the plan, go. Going in, in terms of the parking, I thought it was just the uh, the vertical parking into the uh. Into the 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 land that would be for sure. Yeah, that's all.
Jan?
Um, yeah, with with all due respect to Manny, I understood it as Will understood it, because we had talked about. Somebody specifically said the twenty-four spaces in front of the ball field. So I. I didn't understand it the way Manny meant it. Um, do you want to talk to the rest of the board about that, Sharon, before I start?
I'll just check out with that. Anybody else want to weigh in on that? I know Trevor was concerned about the parking. Trevor, were you?
Absolutely.
I remember us talking about that, yeah. I mean, my understanding was that that lot was going to be removed. It was always in. It was always in the layout of the upper village. So, yeah, I I. I have to agree with with Jan and Will. As far as my recollection is concerned.
Mick, did you, did you want to weigh in on that one?
I am, yeah, I I always thought it was the vertical.
Yeah.
Didn't realize it was uh, encompassing where the upper village is going to be.
And I have to say, that's sort of where I was too. I I. I couldn't tell from the plan which was staying and which was going, but I did always. Was always more concerned about the vertical by the ball field than about that other one, so. Okay, so it looks like that one was just a. A misunderstanding, and I am sorry if we didn't clarify that early on. That's probably my my mistake, not catching it.
No, it's not your mistake.
Did I continue asking questions?
So Jan, you may go on with the rest of your questions.
Okay, I have several questions, and some of them might be. Better answered next week, so if I ask a question, just say next next time. Okay, so first question is on um, the V one zero one plan. There's a two hundred and thirty-five foot well protection radius, and I'm just curious um. To know what regulatory board governs a, you know, a well protection radius like that, and how it may or may not affect. Your construction and the development.
Yeah, good, no, great, great question. So this, that's this radius that we show on our existing conditions plan, so. There's a history to this well. Um, at one time, this was a water supply well. Not just irrigation, it was potable water. For somebody, whether it was the school or someone else, and so it at some point. When this well was permitted, there was a radius, and it it's based on the the yield of the well. And so when we put this plan together, it's based on record plans. And so what's happened since we put this plan together. And got more involved in the project is we've learned that this is an irrigation well. Not a potable water supply well, and so this radius isn't relevant. To the existing condition in in the sense other than a record drawing.
Okay.
And as part of the project. When this irrigation well does get relocated to a location to be determined. That has permitting requirements, but it it's not, not the same as what's noted on this plan. So so this is being superseded, and it's it's outdated.
Um, I have questions about the parking spaces and the number of spaces you're requesting waivers for, but is that something for the next meeting? With traffic, or is that tonight?
Um, so we, what we're showing on our plans right now. Um, so let me.
We should be, um, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're going to be on. Fifty-seven parking spaces when all is said and done, when we're looking at the lower village reconfiguration. I think right now these drawings show fifty-nine.
Correct.
Right, right, yeah, but we can talk more about that, I think, Jan, next time we meet.
Okay.
Just because we'll be able to kind of see what exactly we're working with. Um, and again, sorry for the back and forth, but.
No, that's okay.
Then police meeting then today, so.
I'll save that for next time we meet. Okay, uh, next question, um. This is just a general question, so we have this list of waivers. At some point. Maybe at the end, can we go over all of them, Sharon?
Yes, 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 that's the wrap-up meeting.
Okay. Um.
Or maybe next time if we have time. But definitely, yes.
Maybe I misunderstood this at a previous presentation, but. I thought, is the the road is going to be what asphalt, but it's a a non, it's an impervious surface, correct? The roadway?
That that's correct, it'll be asphalt.
And the walkways as well?
That's correct.
And the parking areas?
That's correct.
Okay, then I must have misunderstood. I thought that the walkways and the parking areas were going to be impervious, and maybe gravel or stone. I mean shell, okay, so I must have misunderstood that. Okay, so we'll talk about that next week. Um. All right, there's a waiver about for egress that I don't understand. That should be next meeting, right, when we talk about traffic?
Yes, I believe so.
How about signs today?
And there's a, there's also a um, in in uh. Egress, there's also a, I thought there was something in the uh, Mr. Horton's letter about egress, so. Maybe not. Yes, that will be part of the traffic pattern, I believe.
So we'll talk about that next time. Um, how about signs? Is that next time? And the waivers you're asking for for signs?
Okay, so, yeah, I think we should be farther along right now.
Okay, no problem. And then, then I just have a couple of questions about Jane Norton's letter.
Yes.
Maybe they've been answered. I think you've answered those. Okay, I think I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. We um, we have the questions from Mr. Norton. Um, were the most questions, the um, both Chief Polly and. And Chief Hurley said that they did not see any need for special conditions based on what they had heard. So that's sort of where we are at this point with their letters. Uh, Mick, I haven't heard from you.
Um, I'm good, I've got no questions.
Okay, all right. Anyone else with questions for this part of the presentation? Carolyn, am I correct about the um, that we will go back through all of the waivers at that point? At some point after we've got through all the presentations?
You you definitely do have to go through all the waivers and and vote on them at some point. Um, but I think as Jan is kind of pointing out, you know, some of the waivers kind of naturally lend themselves to discussion about. You know, traffic and parking.
Right.
And others, you know, like signs, what does that fall under? I suppose uh, either the wrap-up meeting, or perhaps at your next meeting, if um. If time allows, I think that the sign waiver is something that could be dispensed with relatively quickly.
Yes, right. Okay.
On that note, can I ask a couple of questions?
Certainly.
Madam Chair, um, so are there any waivers, um, Andrew or Brian, that are related to civil that we can kind of? Um, tackle right now? I know Jan asked about.
Yeah.
Next time.
Let me just scan through the the list that was submitted and. Um, we we talked about parking spaces and, you know, nine by twenties required, we've proposed nine by eighteen. Which which is a typical size. I didn't know if there's any feedback for that. But we've we've shown the nine by eighteen on our plan. Um, so that was. On page one of the the waivers.
And and this is, this is Andrew, as far as the others, um, most of them are use-related as as. Jan mentioned, yeah, you have, you know, the signs and then the egress when we're talking about traffic, because that'll come up through the traffic report. Um, number of parking spaces, the the only other one, which isn't civil so much, there is the building height. You know, for the for the lower village, that, it's not tonight, we've already kind of talked about it.
We've already, yeah, that was part of architecture, actually, to begin with, as to why you wanted the higher. Higher building and what that means, so we've pretty much covered that one, I think. And a lot of these are sort of like, you know, standard, you know, because it's a multiple dwellings on one lot.
Correct, most of them are that actually.
Most of them seem to be like that.
You are correct.
Sharon?
Yep.
Through you, could I get Mr. Singer to just clarify what he said? Um, you you said number of parking spaces, but you didn't say anything else. Did you mean we should be talking about the number of them tonight? Because I I definitely have questions about that. Or next time?
Well, tha- that I would leave up to 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 the chair, I mean, under the zoning requirement for forty-six units, sixty-nine would be required. As Vida said, there will be ultimately fifty-seven, so that would be a request for a waiver of twelve spaces. Um, I leave it up to to the board when you want to discuss that.
Okay.
To me, it sort of seems like it's all part and parcel with traffic, but that's just me. Um, I don't know if anyone else has a, has a thought, thought to that. You know.
I, you know, I leave it to you just because um. We'll be able to talk and see the fifty-seven parking spaces on the screen um, at our next meeting.
Okay.
Um, but I'm feeling like we're packing the agenda a little bit much for next time, so we could talk about it here if you feel comfortable. Again, I kind of leave it to you, uh, Madam Chair, what what you think makes more sense.
I have another board member weighing in, yes, Will?
Yeah, I, you know, my thought is, I I would like to take up the parking issue tonight. Because then it would, it would give the applicant time to think about what what we might have. Might have to say for the 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 next meeting.
Okay, all right. That's fine.
And we welcome feedback.
So then Jan, go go for it with your questions about parking.
This is just sort of gut feel stuff, I I I don't have data to basis on, but. I'm concerned that you have enough parking, and. Here's the thing, this isn't a an area that has a, you know, it has very minimal public transportation. Uh, even in a one-bedroom apartment, you could have two people, both who have jobs. Both who have, get in different directions, who both have cars. Um, in a three-bedroom, you could have a teenager who also has a car. Where will they park if there's overflow? And I know you said somewhere in the the presentation, uh, the today, today's material. That the twenty-four spaces in front of the ball field would be off limits, but. I don't know how you could prevent people from parking there, I mean, they're, they live in the town of Wellfleet, anybody could park there, and. I I just, I don't know where people are going to park if if more spaces are required, so. That's my question.
Okay.
So I can speak to that a little bit right now, Jan.
Sure.
Um, we will have our traffic engineer on um, online at the September eighth meeting. So I think that he would be best equipped to answer that question, just because he's a traffic engineer, he understands, you know, how people park and drive and do all these things. Um. I think we might also be well-equipped to answer that, once we do a little homework, to be able to answer. Um, how we can expect. Uh, that everybody at our development will be able to park at this development and the number of spaces that we are providing. Um, Poa does have a number of other properties on the Cape, uh, ranging from, you know, Sandwich, Born, um, Dennis. Uh, Brewster, and now we'll be here, you know, with another number of other properties that we can use as um. As guidelines to explain to you how we anticipate people to use and need parking. Um, so if you could, um, we can do our homework and get back to you about what our usage is like at other properties, and how that's informed the way that we've. Designed um, these spaces for our forty-six apartments here. Sure, if that's all right with you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And Will?
I'm sure if I could just add, because, um, you know, I think we'll definitely want to bring you data, but I, you know, I think from. Looking at data and other developments. Definitely in kind of multifamily housing, uh, uh, in, that is, you know, afford broadly affordable. It's not as much parking as typically is used in market, is demanded and needed in market rate. There, I was privy to a similar conversation that was going on in Provincetown with sixty-five units, that's that's about to start permitting there. And uh, the developers there, the community builders have projects in Provincetown. And um, you know, built it to 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 the specifications of the town, and they actually have a lot of empty spaces. Um, now granted, um, uh, Ms. Morrissey makes a good point that there is not great public transportation at this site. Better public, better transportation in Provincetown, but what I think, what's, we'll bring you some really good data about why why we make these decisions, because that's. Certainly, I don't think we want to sacrifice um, the beauty of this site and be knocking down trees, so that we can put cars. Uh, in parking, uh, if we if we don't have to.
Okay, right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Covern. Will and Trevor both have their hands up, so Will, you want to start?
Good, yeah, um. And I agree with Jan, my first read of this is is there enough parking, but I certainly am. I look forward to the, to 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 the data. Uh, also, you know, I know this, uh, we, I just was heard that there's going to be a curb. And maybe thi- this is a terrible idea of mine, I'm I'm no traffic engineer or safety engineer, but. If you did away with the curb, you allow people just to sort of park by the side when there there's overflow. And I live on a little bitty road, and with only one car can get by. But when there's overflow, people just park on the side, because there's no curb, and it seems to work, but. There's a lot of units, so I I understand if someone says I need to have my brain inspected, that that may may be correct. That's it.
And Trevor?
Um, this is probably self-evident, but I think it would be helpful next time to see a breakdown of. Of how the number of spaces are arrived at, or how they're intended to be allocated to the various uses. And the other thing I wanted to throw out there was, I hate, you know, someone was talking about the, in Provincetown where there's empty parking spaces, I would hate to see. I would hate to see it, the site developed, so that there's. Plenty of parking and then half of it, or a third of it goes unused. Maybe. Maybe in the plans, um, that they could allocate a space for. Like a reserve area, um, like like you have with septic systems, you know, if if we find that. We haven't allocated enough parking. Um, and people are parking in the, in front of the ball fields, maybe there's a reserve area that could be developed in the future. Uh, to provide some additional parking.
Good point. Great. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, I'm trying to see if I see any other hands. Mick, did you have anything to say about?
My my question for more Britannia, I'll wait till next week.
Okay.
For two weeks, that's.
Two weeks, yeah, okay, all right. All right, um, anyone else? So do you have another, anything more? Vita to present to us today, or?
I just have one question, uh, if you can't hear me, um.
She, you froze, Vida, we couldn't hear you. Oh, she froze again.
Let's try again. She disappeared. Ah, here she is, she had a question for Carolyn regarding our LDA ground lease. I don't know what that means, Carolyn, maybe you do.
Well, it's our land development agreement, but I'm not sure what the question is, so.
That's okay, can you, can you guys hear me?
So.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can you guys hear me? Okay.
I can hear you now, yes.
Okay. Carolyn, I just wanted to know, um, how we can, um, take the next steps with the survey being on, I think it was one of the first pages here, the limited existing conditions plan. Can we use that to wrap up the, uh, ground lease as an exhibit for that?
I will follow up the folks who are handling that because I think you can.
Okay.
Um. Is it, uh, you know, is it among the, the civil engineering drawings submitted tonight or the original submit?
It's, uh, I think it's on the next page.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back, um, this.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I get the right number.
This plan might give you an idea of the, you know, the, the area between the dash lines, this in general, it needs to be done by a surveyor to an exact size and dimension, but that, that in general will be the least, least area.
Okay, Brian, your, um, your little inset of your face is covering up the actual number of the plan. Can you tell me what the number of the plan is?
I'm sorry, it's, uh, C, C one oh one. So it's the.
I'm sorry?
It's a dry and C one oh one.
C one oh one.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I can follow up with that, uh, with you separately, Carolyn. I don't want to take up time tonight. I just wanted to.
No, that's fine. And, and i- if Madam Chair, if I could ask one question.
Of course.
Um, which, which perhaps, you know, it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but, um, on the waivers list at the very end, uh, this might be a question for, for Andrew Singer. Um, you've listed Cape Cod Commission Act, Chapter A, Enabling Regulations, The Policy Plan, Bulidings, for, for review of thirty or more residential units. Um, the Cape Cod Commission and the Cape Cod Commission Act, I mean, usually the ZBAs acting in place of local boards. So is there some, uh, something specific or, um, some support for us being able to act in place of the Cape Cod Commission?
Uh, this is Andrew. Um, yes, Carolyn, there is in the Cape Cod Commission, um, uh, in the, uh, authorizing legislation. They are expressly stated that they are a local board for purposes of Chapter forty B. So on every, yeah, so on every forty B, we add that.
That would be great. Thank you.
I could send that to you.
Okay. Very good. Glad you all figured that out. Alright. Anything else?
Sharon, I, I have a question. Um, it's, it really hasn't got, it's not specifically related to the forty B, the waivers, but it, 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 it is of concern of mine.
Yes.
And it has to do with safety during construction. You know, we've got a school right across the street.
Right.
And I'm sure that the applicants are cognizant of that, obviously. Um, but I just think it would be wonderful to, to hear what the applicant plans to do to deal with that issue. I.e. children coming in and out of school and construction going on at the same time. So it doesn't have to be addressed tonight, but it is, it, it's, it's a concern of mine. I'm sure they'll do the best they can, but I'm still a little concerned about this.
Sure. Sure.
When we get to that point, we will make sure that our GC is completely aware of the school and there'll be a health and safety plan, um, as part of their work before they start, uh, working on site. Um, so we'll make sure that we, uh, when we do our bidding out to GCs, that a part of the bid package will be that, um, awareness and planning.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you. Um, we may want to talk about that a bit more.
Yeah, I would like to talk about it, but yeah, but not tonight.
Okay. And Mick had a hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Sharon. Um, when we previously did this, we always put that stuff in findings. And it was written, it's very, very black and white, and we were very, very stringent on safety, neighbors and all of that. And that gets addressed normally at the second to last meeting and, uh, it all goes into the findings.
Right. Okay. Yeah. And we do have the advantage that the police and fire are right there to enforce anything that we put into this plan.
But they, they're very.
We'll be watching you.
I know in the previous, uh, affordable housing, we had very, very strict criteria and rules for contractors, subcontractors, general contractor, and they were really well adhered to.
Right.
So we were very, very cognizant of that.
Thank you for that, Nick. Yes. Okay. Anything further? On this case, on twenty-two sixteen for tonight? If not, I need a motion to continue until September eighth.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, Will?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Mick?
Aye.
Manny?
He's muted.
Yeah, he's working on it.
Aye.
And Sharon?
Aye.
Alright, we'll see you in September.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, guys. Um.
Good job.
Thank you. Twenty-two thirteen is quick. Um, twenty-two thirteen is, um, Foster, two oh six A Kendrick Avenue, Unit Four. Map twenty parcel twenty-eight, request to withdraw without prejudice. The board for this was Manny, Mick, Will, Trevor and myself. I need a motion to allow the Fosters to withdraw without prejudice.
Oh, moved.
And I need a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Manny?
Aye.
Will? Relieve already? He was, he was, he was determined to get out. Um, it's okay. Um, I said Manny, Mick? Did you say aye? Uh, Trevor?
Aye.
Myself, aye. So it's, it's for, Will had left already. He forgot about this one. So Chris, it's four votes in favor and no one opposed.
One abstention.
One abstention, I guess that's what it is. One absence, but it's fine for this purpose. Okay. Moving right along, twenty-nine, twenty-two nineteen Spar, Three Nauset Road, map twenty-eight, parcel eighty-seven, application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaws, six point one point five point one B for the placement of a freestanding ten-by-sixteen foot shed within the setbacks. The board for this will be myself, Jan, Trevor, Mick and Manny. Um, and I believe Spar was here before. She's probably back. There she is, yes. Okay.
Good evening. Thank you.
Yes. So do you want to tell us about the project?
Uh, we would like to place a freestanding ten-by-sixteen shed in our front yard. Um, the issue I believe is that it is very close to the Paper Ione Road, which is, uh, to the, well, I guess to the right of it, looking, um, from my direction. We have some kayaks that we would like to be able to store in there and, uh, we are requesting the, um, ability to put that in. It will be a shed only. It will not have any plumbing or any electricity. It will just be for storage.
Thank you. Okay. And I don't believe we have any letters. Chris, do we have any letters on this project? Chris?
No letters.
No letters. Okay. And is there anyone in the room who would like to speak to this project? Seeing none, I will go to the board and I'm going to start with you, Jan.
Well, the problem is, is that under our bylaws, a shed has to be, can only be a hundred and twenty square feet or less, and this is a hundred and sixty feet, square feet. So that means it's an accessory building under our bylaws and an accessory building can't be in the front or side setbacks. Uh, this isn't, I mean, you could put an hu- a hundred and twenty square foot shed where you want to put it. Um, but not a, a one hundred and sixty square foot accessory building. Um, so your application, uh, refers to six point one point five point one B, which I don't think is applicable because it only refers to, i- i- it permits a, a pre-existing non-conforming, what, single or two-family dwelling to be, uh, altered. I- it doesn't provide for the placement of a new non-conforming structure. So I don't think we have the ability to do this. I don't think there's any way under the, our bylaws to allow you to do this.
Thank you. Mick?
Yeah, unfortunately, I agree with my colleague, Jan. We just don't have the authority to permit a hundred and sixty square foot shed. And those are the bylaws and it's our job to uphold the bylaws.
Alright. Manny?
I have the same concerns also, um. I would think you would have to go through conservation and so on. I'm with the rest of the board.
Trevor?
Uh, yeah, I agree with Jan. I have nothing further.
Andy?
Yeah, I agree with Jan as well, and I have nothing further.
Right.
Madam Chairman, I forgot to say it's also in a floodplain and you'd have to have a, I believe you'd have to have a floodplain variance.
Yeah. Yeah. Hmm. I believe you would, except that, you know, I don't know if you knew floodplain variance for a shed, but.
Right.
But if, but the shed has to be ten by twelve.
Right.
And that, this is far as our problem is that if your shed is ten by twelve, you can go to the building inspector and he can allow you to do it. But as I understand it, you would not have to come to us. But if your flood is ten by sixteen, it's too big.
Just out of curiosity, um, excuse me, if it was, um, eight by, eight by sixteen, I need the sixteen for the length of my kayak. Um, the eight would get me six feet over the one-twenty. Would that be acceptable?
Has to be one-twenty.
One-twenty or less.
One-twenty or less.
I guess I'm, that means I'm going to have to find someone who's willing to build me a custom shed because they don't seem to cut, come in, in half, in half widths. And I just have to say, um, that we have neighbors that have put up things without permits that clearly do not meet the regulations and it's very difficult to, um, understand why some things are allowed to be built while others are not. So i- it's just rather disappointing.
I'll answer that, Madam Chairperson, if you don't mind. Um, unfortunately, any enforcement that is down to the building department to enforce the bylaws, the townspeople vote on the bylaws. They bring these to town meeting, we vote on it. It's up to us to apply them. You could have done this without telling anybody. Plenty of people have done it, but you are playing by the rules. And unfortunately, because you're playing by the rules, which I admire, we're only able to give you a hundred and twenty square feet. We're, we don't have the authority to give you any more than that. And for that, I truly am sorry, but it's catch twenty-two. And we do have to apply the bylaws fairly as the cases come to us. For anybody who does anything, that's an enforcing issue for the building inspector. It's really not a zoning issue, but we try to play fair and I'm disappointed for you, but we have to apply by the bylaws as they're written. So I hope that eases the pain a little bit for you.
You may want to rat on, on your neighbors to the building inspector.
Inspector who informed me when I spoke to him that there's their accessory building, two stories that blocked my view of the water was built without a zoning board permit. So, um, it's just rather disappointing that I want to put up something legally and can't do it. So I understand.
What we, what we normally do in this case is allow you to withdraw without prejudice, rather than giving you an actual denial. Um, if you would like that, we can certainly go, go that route.
Wha- what exactly does that mean? I'm not.
If we give you a denial, you can't come for, before us with anything and for two, for two years. If we allow you to withdraw without prejudice and you rethink something and you have, have an idea somehow along the way, you can come back.
So, um, are you saying that if I can configure something that is a hundred and twenty square feet, I can just go ahead and do it without any?
Need to go to the building inspector, but yes, the building inspector can issue you a permit for a shed that is a hundred and twenty square feet.
I can go in that spot without any problem.
Absolutely.
Yeah, right. But it has to be a hundred and twenty square feet.
Okay, well, I'll have to figure out how to make that work. It's just, it's challenging because Ione Road is, is a very unclear. Where, where it actually is, is very unclear. I don't think any of us know where the road actually is. So, um, okay, you've done your job and I've done mine. Uh, I must say I'm disappointed.
Yes, I understand.
But. Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We need to make a motion, Sharon.
Yes, yes. I need a motion to, to allow her to withdraw without prejudice. You're moving that? I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, um, Trevor?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Manny?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry about that one.
Very unfortunate, yeah.
It's a, it's a messy one. Alright. Now we're on to, if I haven't lost my agendas. Uh, here it is, good. Alright. Twenty-two twenty Lovejoy and Whistler, eighty-five Sandpiper Hill Road, map twenty-two parcel fourteen, application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaws, six point one point five point one B for in addition to illegally pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. And the board for this one is myself, Manny, Mick, Trevor and Andy. Hi. Um, and I'm not sure who's presenting for, for Lovejoys. Are you presenting for yourselves? Yes.
Well, we're here. Mary Lovejoy and John Whistler and Jay Horowitz is also on.
Jay, yes.
Home. If Jay gets unmuted, he can participate as well.
So he's the five oh eight number there?
Yes, he is.
Okay, Jay, unmute yourself and tell us what you're doing.
Okay. No, it's not that good. Um, I can begin while he's doing it. We are doing, we have a, uh, home, which is now our primary residence in Wellfleet. Uh, we are, uh, putting on an addition. Uh, there's an existing, the home's been there since nineteen sixty and we have a, we are currently twenty-eight feet, um, away from the lot line and on the south side. And we are asking for a variance to allow us to extend our home with a screen porch and a room above it, uh, that would be twenty-six feet. So we are, uh, existently in a non-conforming situation and we're asking for that to be also non-conforming for this addition to the south side of our house.
You're actually asking for a variance in Wellfleet. That's a, that, you're, you're asking for a variance. You're asking for a special permit. And Wellfleet, that's a special permit.
Thank you.
So paperwork is fine, just clarifying for the minutes. Okay. Alright, does Jay unmuted yet?
Uh, he is not for some reason. Um, so, but I have worked closely with him and also are, uh, so hopefully I can answer questions and, uh, that might come up.
Okay, so.
Close with him over the last several months.
We have, um, I think we have, Andy, keep me sa- safe, keep me sane on this. We have one letter, we have two letters.
There are two, two emails.
Two emails, okay. And the one is from Kurt Spindler and the other is from Ray Galat.
Correct.
And they both say that they have no issues. They are both a butters and they both have no issues with it. Chris, do we have any other?
Um. No.
No other letters? And is there anyone here in the audience who wants to speak to this? To this project?
So.
Yes. Yes, Mr., Mr. Lovejoy.
I, I'm, I'm also in a butter.
Ah, okay.
And, uh, I have no objection. I, they've been exemplary neighbors and, uh, I think it's a, uh, this being their primary residence, I think, uh, they should certainly be allowed, uh, to, to make this minor addition.
Okay, um.
Thank you, Stowe. Full disclosure, that is my brother speaking.
I was going to say, this seems to be a relative though, so it's planned.
We'll discount him.
I would have, I would have sent an email, but I, I didn't get my act together.
Okay. But you came to the meeting, so that counts.
Yeah. There were also, I thought, Christine, two people that sent emails, David Lockwood as well as Dick Dimmick, two of our other butters who, uh, did indicate that they were.
I don't have that paperwork with me, but I think you.
I don't have that paperwork with me, but I think you are correct.
So that's, we've got four, four emails in in support plus one person speaking in support. And I don't see anybody who's. Raising their hand here, so I can go. To the board, to Mick.
Uh, can you come back to me in a minute, please?
I can, how about Manny?
Uh, I don't see any problems with this, except that Jay didn't stake.
Yeah, he didn't stake it, Jay.
But I think it'll blend in very nicely where it is.
Hey, Andy.
Yeah, I just think it's important for the uh the applicants to. Indicate. That the front, what they consider the front of where they consider the front of their house. And where they consider the rear, I mean. Uh, I think that's. That's where this all started, so. Just to be clear, I I. I think I understand, that's what I put in the findings, but I think it would be better if you. One of you said that as well.
I I can answer that.
Okay.
When I went down to meet with the building inspector.
And you you need, we need your name, we need your name, sir.
Doesn't say there, Gary Lucas.
Yeah, but it's just for the record, yeah, okay.
I met with a building inspector and he pulled out the last building permit, which was with Cape Associates. When they put a new master bedroom on, and in that permit, they called the side where the master bathroom, the back lot. Or the side lot, excuse me, the side lot, so the building inspector said, since that was documented in the file. As that be in the side lot, that going forward, that would be the side lot. In the front where they parked their cars would be the front. Towards the bay would be another side lot and with the screen and porch that they want to extend, that's the back lot now. And that was all determined when he looked up the old permit.
And I think that's what you you had said, right, Andy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't say anything about the old permit, I just said that the applicant's considered.
Right, and that's how the building inspector made that determination.
Anything else?
Okay, I just, I think it should be clear that you don't disagree with that determination.
Oh, we agree with that, we are on a corner, so.
Okay, we know where you are, we.
Thank you, yes, we actually agree that the front of our house is at the north side of lot. And where the main front door and with the new design, it will be very obvious that it is the front door.
Where the chimney is.
Correct, correct.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, Jan. Oh, Trevor.
I'm not gonna move and favor this unless Jay can figure out how to unmute himself.
Apparently can't, so. Mrs. Lovejoy's word for it, that that is in fact Jay, it may not be Jay.
He's a very good architect.
I know, he designed my house. Mick.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm I'm good.
Right, and I don't, I don't have any questions either, so I need to have a motion to go to findings.
Don't moved.
The second, all right, all in favor, Nick.
I.
Annie.
I.
Andy.
I.
Trevor. And myself, I, okay, and I thank Andy for these findings. This is an application for a special permit under wealthy zoning bylaws six point one point five point one B. For construction of an addition to illegally pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling at eighty-five Sandpiper Hill Road. The dwelling is entitled to treatment as lawfully pre-existing non-conforming structure, having been in existence for at least ten years. As provided for in Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point two point two. This structure is on a corner lot of Sandpaper, Sandpiper Hill Road. The front of the structure faces north to on the northern corner of the street and the rear faces southern property line. The present rear setback of the structure is twenty-eight feet where thirty feet is required. The proposed rear addition will reduce that setback to twenty-five point nine on the northwest side of the rear addition. And twenty-eight point two on the northeast side of the rear addition. The square footage of the lot is fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet, the square footage of the lot coverage of the existing dwelling is. One thousand four hundred and sixty-five square feet, the square footage of the proposed dwelling is two thousand one hundred and nine square feet. There will be a volumetric increase of six hundred and forty-four square feet. Four emails were were received expressing no opposes from a butters, expressing no opposition to the. To this addition, uh one person spoken in support um. At the hearing. The use conforms with the objectives of the R one district as stated in Wellfleet zoning bylaw three point two. Six, after considering the district objectives for the dis zoning district as provided for in Wellfleet zoning bylaw three point two. And the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point two. The board finds that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity. So the proposed alteration will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming. Structure and the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity. After considering the district objectives for the district as provided for in Wellfleet zoning bylaw three point two and the relevant criteria. Set forth in Wellfleet zoning bylaw eight point four point two. That's what I got.
One minor, one year quibble on the, when you talk about the setbacks.
Yep.
Existing is twenty-eight, that wasn't shown on the site plan, but we established that somehow?
Yeah, it's some. Was stated somewhere.
It is on something.
Yeah, I didn't know that at the beginning either, Trevor, but.
Okay, but that's, all right, so then, and then you say it's being reduced to twenty-five point nine on one corner, which is fine, but then you also say it's being reduced to. Twenty-eight point two, which technically is being increased, so I would just eliminate the the reference to the twenty-eight point two.
Okay, yeah, all right. Right, all right, we'll reduce that setback to twenty-five point nine on the northwest side of the rear addition period.
Correct.
Thing else, all right, I need a motion to accept the findings.
Don't move.
And a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor, Mick?
I.
Manny.
I.
Andy.
I.
Trevor.
I.
Sharon, I, and then I need a motion to. Grant the permit based on the findings.
I'll make a motion to grant the special permit.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Mick?
I.
Manny.
I.
Andy.
I.
Trevor.
I.
And Sharon, I, okay. Last one.
Thank you.
Congratulations, I'm sorry, we never heard from Jay.
Thank you all.
Thank you all, all right. I see Ben.
Would be Ben.
He's here, he's here, I told you, see, what did I tell you, Ben, I knew you had plenty of time.
You wait long enough and it can happen.
Anything can. But it's earlier than I thought it was gonna be.
Me too.
Okay, uh twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one, Behan, two sixty-five Ridgeway Road, map thirty-four. Parcel one forty-six, application for a national special, national seashore park special permit pursuant to general law. Six C set forty A S S six and nine and Wellfleet zoning bylaws six point one point five and eight point four point two. And a variance from bylaws S five point four point two, minimum yard requirements. Pursuant to Massachusetts general law C forty A S ten and bylaws S eight point four point three. To relocate a pre-existing non-conforming structure, a pre-existing non-conforming lot. At a location with a two-foot setback from the westerly property line and a five-foot setback from the northerly proper. Property line and the board for this will be um. Trevor, Manny, Mick, Jan and Andy. I'll take it, I'll take a time off. All right, Ben, you're on.
Yes, thank you all, hey, it's 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 great to see you all again on the screen, it's, I think it's been forever since I've been in front of your board, so it's nice to see you all. Wait to see in person, uh, some of you may remember that this was before the board back in twenty thirteen. Um, Susan owns the property at two sixty-five Ridgeway, and when you look at the site plan, you'll see that there are two. Homes on the property and the reason for that is because. Prior to twenty fifteen. Susan also owned the property immediately adjacent to this on the north side. Um, which was to on, which actually had front of it on Pilgrim Road. And the Pilgrim Road property was eroding so quickly, they had to move the structure off, it was moved off of Pilgrim Road and was moved on to what you're looking at on the site plan now. Is a structure that's in the bottom left corner, and so that house was moved over to that. Um, there was an appeal taken to that matter, the Superior Court by the butters immediately to the rear. Shown on the property two five five, um, we resolved our differences with that one. Um, dismissed and settled that case, came back in front of the board right after that to permit some changes in the roof line that were negotiated between the parties. And now what's happened and the two sixty-five dwelling. That you're looking at on the site plan that's sitting there is sitting in the same location, it's been sitting since roughly, I believe, the nineteen, around nineteen thirty-five it was built. Now, those of you that have been out to the site can see that it's time for that structure. To be moved because of the threatening coastal erosion.
We actually all got there, Will, I mean, Ben.
Yes. There's not a lot to look at, it's a little, it's a little. But I I walked around a little bit today. Might get paid for it.
We all got there.
So, um, but the proposal here is 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 really to do, only to do is to is to is to. Put the existing two sixty-five dwelling on rails, slide it rearward, rotate it ninety degrees counterclockwise. And put it down on a foundation, now I've looked at the site plan, it's it's hard to envision that looking at the site plan. I even went so as far as to make cutouts of the two sixty-five dwelling and put it on top of there. Um, I don't think the site plan is exactly correct as to what the the new located house would look like, I think it'll be slightly smaller. But the proposal is to put an uninhabitable uninhabited basement, basement under it, you know, a foundation to hold utilities. Put it down, the house will be approximately three and a half feet taller because of the construction of the foundation. Um, no increase in bedrooms, no change of use, um, and what we're asking the board is for. Um, a variance, I believe that because it creates a new and different. Non-conformity on the west side, um, that this in fact requires a variant. This, the two sixty-five structure is conforming as to the westerly sideline, it's more than fifty feet away from from Cliff Road. It's gonna go to approximately two feet off, uh, so we need the variance um to me, to meet that standard. And we have to demonstrate to your satisfaction as a board that A. Um, there's a hardship that the applicant is going to uh suffer if the relief is not granted, uh that that hardship is quite simply, they will lose the use of their home. Um, you know, they'll, they will have to remove it from the site, will lose the use for whatever additional remaining time there may be. With the house relocated, that is a significant both financial and and non-financial harm to them. It has to be directly related to or owing to a condition on the lot, which is, it's just topographical. Uh, saw condition or shape, um, it's not a shade consideration, a lot is roughly rectangular, actually L-shaped. Uh, but it's topographical, the topography of the land is shifting and changing in such a way that it will not support. A structure in the location that it's in now, so uh the topography just will not lend itself to. Um, to to keeping a structure where it is now. Um, the relief has to be granted such that it it will not substantially derogate from the spirit of the intent of the bylaw. And the relief can be granted as consistent with the bylaw. Um, this is a pre-existing, I'm sorry, not a pre-existing non-conforming use of the property, it's a non-conforming use by special permit. Um, the board permitted the relocation and combination of these lots and and the location of the two dwellings. Uh, because there was no increase in the bedroom count, there's no change in the use of the two properties at Pilgrim Road and and Ridgeway Street. Um, the relocation of this dwelling looks to me like it's approximately, looks to me maybe sixty or seventy feet landward. Um, won't affect any change of use of the property, I won't change the bedroom count, won't change the intended use. So we believe that the board has in front of us sufficient information in fact to justify the finding of the requisite facts for the granting of a variance. Um, and i- in addition to that, because we're requiring that zoning relief, we also require a national seashore. Special permit, which has its own set of considerations, um, which include, you know, uh, there won't be substantial changes to the to the uh, to the. The grading, the vegetation, um, it won't derogate from the use of the property and also it won't, there won't be a, an increase in the um. There won't be an increase in the pre nineteen fifty-nine uh habitable area of the structure. Um, we're not changing the habitable area of the structure at all, so we don't believe that it will derogate from the, from the um, from the, the goals and policies of the. Of the national seashore special permit, um, I do know that um, the obvious have counsel, I've spoken with her, I expect her to make a presentation and I. And I would love to just reserve the ability to to either counter or talk about whatever issues are raised. By the butters, and with that, um, I'll leave my presentation and then try to answer any questions that I can, and thank you all.
All right, so um. Chris, I know we have one letter from the seashore. Um, which I will read um. From Lauren, this year we have seen a number of private properties with houses, wells and septic systems and cesspools. That are threatened by coastal erosion where the owner, landowner has waited until the last minute to remove them. Please share the park's concern with the board that in requesting a variance due to the hardship posed by the coastal bank. The National Park Service believes it is incumbent on the landlord, landowner to ensure removal of septic and well components. As well as any house decks, foundations, well before they may topple over the coastal bank onto the beach. We recommend affirming the landowner responsibility to pump septic tanks and remove all buildings and utilities when threatened. Be added to permit documents. And I went, I guess, you know, are there. There are no other letters, I don't think, right, Chris? Chris, did we have any other letters on this one?
No.
Okay, all right, so then there may be people who want to speak to this.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I I I did receive a letter from from attorney, from attorney Moore, I hope that's in the record for the board to review.
I do not have such a letter, no.
I'm happy to share it up council.
Don't recall it.
We did submit it yesterday um through Ms. Bates, I'm happy to resend it if the board didn't receive it.
No, we, we did not, so can can you read it to us, Ms. Mark?
I can.
Summarize it.
I'll give you a higher level overview of it, uh, because it would be quite a bit of detail to go into this evening before the board. But I do wanna start by um introducing myself, I'm Valerie Moore from Nutter McLennan and Fish for the record. Here on behalf of Karen Elbing, who owns the property located at two fifty-five Ridgeway Road. That's the direct butter to the property at issue. Um, Ms. Elbing was also the, a party to the two thousand thirteen. Appeal of the prior special permit issued by this board and a party to the settlement agreement that allowed that special permit. To um ultimately be recorded and exercised. Um, I wanna start by picking up on a comment that Attorney Zender made this evening about the. Proposed cottage house. As relocated being potentially smaller than what's shown on the plan or not accurately depicted on the plan. Certainly before this board contemplates approving anything, the plans that are presented to it should accurately depict. The dwelling and what's proposed to be constructed, um, because certainly what is shown on the plan appears to be larger. Than the existing dwelling as it appears to incorporate some of the existing deck as part of the foundation. First and foremost. In two thousand thirteen, when Ms. Elbing appealed the special permit, which had authorized the expansion of the cottage on the property. The party settlement, which allowed that expansion to go forward, required future work to comply with the zoning ordinance. This does not and blatantly violates that settlement agreement. Regardless of Ms. Behan's violation of that settlement agreement that allowed her to expand the cottage on the property in the first place. This board should deny her request for a special permit and variance this evening for the following reasons. First, Ms. Behan claims that the justification for a variance is coastal erosion. It is one of the requirements for the issuance of a variance that the topographical constraint on the property. Be unique to that property and not found within the surrounding zoning district. As is clearly made evident by the comment letter submitted by National Seashore. Coastal erosion is impacting numerous properties throughout Wellfleet, it is certainly not unique to this. Property. Moreover, Ms. Behan was well aware of the erosion on the property when it was purchased in two thousand thirteen. It is not an immediate driver of this relocation of the dwelling. As the septic leach field is significantly closer to the bank than the existing dwelling. But there has been no attempt to relocate that, and in fact, the applicant made assurances. But there has been no attempt to relocate that. And in fact, the applicant made assurances to the Conservation Commission that relocating it was not necessary at this time, despite it being much closer to the bank than the dwelling. The sole purpose of this exercise appears to be to expand the existing dwelling. The board should not tolerate that expansion. The property is already overcrowded with two dwellings on it where only one is permitted under the zoning bylaw. That overcrowding is made readily apparent under existing conditions as evidenced by the Behan's parking and storage of a dumpster on the National Seashore property, not even on their own property. Their inability to accommodate these existing uses on their property clearly shows that an expansion will have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. As it will cause further encroachments onto the National Seashore property. As well as significant safety concerns. As the Behans currently park within the Ridgway Road right of way rather than on their own property. It causes delivery vehicles and other trucks accessing that property to have to then back up the road. To get back to the main road, causing a hazard to pedestrians and other vehicles. Moreover, moving the dwelling in close proximity to the Elbing property is going to overcrowd the front portion of the Behan lot. It will completely block the Elbing's view. And will put the second floor of the Behan dwelling such that it. Directly into bedroom. Consistent with.
Sorry, seem to be freezing up a bit.
Yeah.
Let me, uh. Adjust my, is that better?
Yes, better now. Yeah, you froze up for a minute.
Sorry about that.
Happens.
Moving the dwelling in close proximity to the Elbing property is going to overcrow the front portion of the lot, completely blocking the Elbing's view. It will put the second floor of the Behan dwelling such that it looks directly into the Elbing's master bedroom. This is not a dense urban environment and such, such a step is clearly inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhood and the general character of development in wealthly. The Elbing ex, the Behan extension does not qualify for a special permit. As that is for pre-existing legal non-conformities. The merger of the Elbing lot in two thousand twenty one. More than eight years after the special permit that required it, required a variance for minimum lot area and for frontage. Ms. Behan failed to seek that relief in two thousand twenty one and must do so now. So there are two additional non-conformities before this board. That require variances that were not sought in the current application. The new non-conformities that are being created such as the new stepback intrusion and the expansion of an existing stepback intrusion clearly require a variance. And the applicant has shown no hardship justifying it. There is no hardship that justifies the expansion of the house on this already overcrowded lot. And the movement of the house close to the Elbing property. Additionally, the zoning bylaw prohibits the cutting of timber within the National Seashore District. The area to which the dwelling is proposed to be relocated is the only remaining vegetated area on that lot. Significant clearing has gone on on this lot in recent years. And the removal of vegetation not only violates the bylaw, but will further exacerbate erosion in the area, creating a hazard to the neighborhood. Accordingly, the board should deny the application for both the special permit and the variances before you this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else? I know Ben that you want to respond, but is there anyone else who wants to speak first before I?
Uh, hello.
Mr. E, Mr. Elbing.
Uh, Chris Elbing, uh. I just wanted to point out that, uh, when we bought this home in nineteen ninety nine, um. This, this neighborhood was, was a, uh, sparsely, um. It was scattered cottages. Um, and what they're proposing to do is to lump together two houses so close. That they're going to actually look like one house. They're only, on the plans, it looks like they're only three feet apart. Essentially, we're building an eighty-eight foot wide house. Um, and, and there's no other house like that anywhere around the neighborhood. The, the beachcomber isn't even the eighty-eight feet wide. Um, and, and it's, it's, it, the change in the character of the neighborhood. Caused by that, it is, it's just that the neighborhood changes. It's right, it's going to be seen from the road. It's going to be seen from the water. It's going to be seen from all the neighbor, neighboring properties as this enormous. Single house. Um, so that affects our, our privacy. It affects our enjoyment of the property. It affects our. Uh, uh, uh. Um, and, and it, it changes the neighborhood substantially. So I, I, I just wanted to, to, to point that out.
Thank you. Okay, and.
And, and I wanted to add something to, um, to what Ms. Moore said. Um, so I'm going to attempt to share my screen. You can help me. See. Alright, I, I think everyone can see this screen. Um, so. Uh, Ms. Moore talked about the impact of this house on, on our property, um, on our privacy and. Um, I did want to point out that. The intensity of use of these two houses is very, very high. Um, and. In fact, uh, the dwelling, the house that is proposed to be relocated. Um, is used as the guest house. Um, Ms. Behan lives in the cottage and the dwelling is used as the guest house. Um, and so, uh, what I am showing here is the number of guests at the Behan's house on a, a typical summer day. Um, this is, uh, this was taken, uh, July eighteenth of last year. Um, you can see there are five vehicles worth of, of guests on the property. Uh, and then. If I can do this. Um, so just, uh, for, you know, to show that that wasn't the only photo, uh, this is. This is another photo that was, uh, taken later that summer on August seventeenth. In this case, there are eight. Uh, vehicles worth of guests at the property. Um, and those guests stay in the dwelling. Um, which is the house that's going to be relocated. Um, I also wanted to correct something that Mr. Zender said. Um, he. He, uh, guessed that the dwelling was moving back sixty feet or so. It's moving back approximately one hundred feet closer. To our home. Um, and as Ms. Moore noted. That includes a hundred feet closer to our master bedroom window. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a real issue. Uh, the other thing that I also wanted to note was. Currently between our home and the dwelling, uh, is approximately a hundred and twenty feet. Of, uh, mature densely packed trees. You can barely walk through them. Um, and they provide considerable privacy, uh, between the dwelling and our home. And they certainly help with things like light and noise because as you can imagine from looking at all these cars. The dwelling is a very busy house. Um, there's a lot going on there and it's quite noisy. The plans that are proposed. That buffer of trees is cut down. So it will go from. I think I calculated it will go from a hundred and twenty feet of densely packed mature trees. To twenty-five feet at best. And that assumes that there is absolutely no, um. Uh, spillover of the construction further, uh, past what they have as their work line. So, you know, as, as you can see, this is, this is not a small, uh, change. It's. It's, it's a, it's huge. Um, and it's, it severely impacts. Um, our privacy, um, the light, the noise from the dwelling. Uh, and, uh, we would really ask you to take that into careful consideration, um, in, in these deliberations.
Thank you.
I, I also, I also wanted to correct one thing, Madam Chairperson.
Sure.
Um, the Seashore actually sent two letters yesterday. Uh, one of them was sent at two twenty-five PM. I don't know if you received that, but it, it has a very different tone than the letter that. You read, and I believe it was the letter that they sent after doing a site visit and.
Okay.
Um, if you don't have that, maybe Ms. Moore could read you the, the email. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, do you have that Seashore email?
Yeah, I'm happy to read it.
Sure.
Says. Chris, please share our additional comment with board members. We are concerned about the intensity of use issues associated with the property and it is a concern how much of this property's activity will be displaced due to the erosion over time. Which needs consideration. It appears that the dumpster is in the street layout. Most importantly, some of the landscape equipment and parking already extends onto the NPS land to the south as per the attached photos. These must be removed. We request marked delineation of the NPS land and relocation of the split rail fence to the property line via condition of any approval. So that as the lot size diminishes due to coastal erosion, we can ensure no encroachment on the park land. We thank the board for its consideration of our comments. Lauren. That's Lauren McKean.
Thank you very much. Okay. Everything, I think if you stop sharing your screen now, I can see the rest of the board a little easier. Thank you. Thank you. Um, okay, I don't think I have anyone else who wants to speak, so I'm going to go to the board. Um, so Manny.
Oh, wait.
Okay. Andy?
Um, yeah, I'm a, um, I'm a bit confused. I. I know that. Ben has said that the, he's going to, the applicant is going to swing this building ninety degrees. But even if it swung that way, it looks different and. Perhaps that could be explained.
Ben, that was my question too.
The dimensions of, of the structure are different.
Mm-hmm. Right.
May I share?
Yes.
Okay, what I did was I, I got my scissors out and I, and I cut out the two six five dwelling from a plan and laid it out over the, uh. The proposed relocated dwelling area. And. And, and I believe that. What's happened is that the dimensions are, when I look at the plan, the dimensions of the two six five and the two six five relocated are the same if you turn it ninety degrees counterclockwise. But then there's an additional little piece there that, from what I understand from my client, from the engineer, they're not adding to this house at all. So I don't know why that's there. In fact, we would certainly be okay with the condition that says that there's no increase. Or change to the structure of the house itself, other than simply moving it. So I think that's a mistake that, um. David LeJoy made in preparing the plan. And unfortunately, Dave was in the process of retiring at the time. We weren't really able to get a lot of response from him in terms of this plan. So. Um, we can certainly either have a condition that. The structure itself only. Be rotated and relocated with no increase in the, in the area of the structure. We'd be fine with that. I, I think it's where I can. You know, I'm not sure how I do it in this virtual environment, but I can certainly re, redraw this plan to remove that little. It's just on the side, Andy. So. I wish I had you able to show you this, but I don't. But I understand that the proposal really is only to, to put this house, lift this house, put on a rail, slide it rearward, rotate it ninety degrees and put it back down on a foundation.
Anything else, Sandy?
No.
Jan?
Sharon, just, I'm on this board, right?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Sure. I'm the only one not on this.
That's right. Okay. I, I don't, I don't know what to make of this. Uh, I. I need to read and see, uh, Attorney Moore's letter. It, it's just. I need to study that. I, I'm also concerned that I don't see. Any information about the previous special permit and the appeal. And also, why would we accept a plan? That's not exact. I, I, I just. I'm not, I'm, I'm certainly wouldn't make a decision on this tonight.
Nick?
Um, yeah, I'm in the same boat. I really want to understand what went on with the agreement. And now we're moving the property back. We've never allowed anything within two feet. I don't see a variance here. I'm looking to find a way for a variance. I don't see it. But, uh, there's a lot, there's a lot of this puzzle for me that's missing. And I don't, I simply don't understand that flipping the building ninety degrees. I'm not seeing that. I've tried it every which way, but I, I just don't see it.
Trevor?
Um, yeah, I agree with my colleagues. I mean, there's definitely a discrepancy in, in David LeJoy's plan. Um, there are, if you look at the existing. The existing drawing, the existing. Uh, dwelling. There are dimensions that match up to. The. Dimensions that are on the proposed location. Um, but they're indicated as deck. They're not indicated as. Structure. Or, or as, as part of the house. Um. So I would definitely want to see the site plan. Clarified. Uh, to make sure that the footprint of the post and the footprint of the existing are same. Um, and I think, you know, there was a lot of information presented. Tonight by the abutters that. I think we need to dig into a little bit. Um. And I definitely would like to see that. Letter that we didn't get.
Yeah.
So I would absolutely agree that can't make a decision on this tonight. Um, I also question. Uh, a variance. I don't. You know, cer- certainly there's a new nonconformity with, with relation to that structure, but there is not a new nonconformity with relation to the site. There's already an intrusion to the. West step back with the cottage. So it doesn't create a new nonconformity. In respect to the site.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know that, I don't know that it would need a variance. Uh, I think. We could potentially find a way to do it with special permit. Um, but I think there's a lot of unanswered questions that need to be. Looked into more.
Thank you. Manny?
I would, I agree with the rest of the board. Um. The two dwellings look totally different. Um. Well, the proposed dwelling. Just doesn't look like. The dwelling that's there. And, uh, that should be much clearer. And also I had a question for Ben. When they move, when they, if they move that cottage. Um, do we clear all the brush and? Would it have to be like flat to move that over there? Which would mean replanting?
Ben, you're muted. If you could in, yeah.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Manny, uh, you know, look, the vegetation where the house is going would have to be removed, but I understand the tree by law allows you to remove vegetation as necessary to construct a residence. So I don't, I don't think that, it doesn't deprive you of the use of your land. So yes, it would have to be, it would have to be removed. To the extent that they have to get the, the house into that new location.
And, and, and just, I'm sorry. Manny, do you have any more questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I, not only would vegetation have to be moved, in my view. But there, there would have to be a considerable or. Amount of. Leveling, if you will. You know, that, that part of the property goes up. Um. I mean, and. I don't know how you move a house. To a new spot. I just don't, I don't know how you do that without also digging out a, a lot of the. Ground around there too.
If I could respond, Sharon, I, I think, right. I think you're right. Look, you don't, you don't, you don't locate or build a house without digging a hole and pouring a foundation and. Moving it. You know, I can certainly bring as, bring as a handbrow to explain the movement. For a fall. I understand he has rails that he puts the house on and they slide the house along the rails. But yeah, there's, there's no way that you're going to dig a foundation and. And put a house on it without A, removing vegetation and B, digging a hole. And it's.
Okay, yeah, but, but it's not, it's not just simply do those two things. I guess what I was saying was, and there isn't, there's not. Topography here in the drawing that I'm looking at, but. I, 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 you know, when I went over and looked at the property, uh. Maybe I wasn't, maybe I'm wrong, but my recollection was when I looked to that north, northern boundary line, um. Or at least the work. Line. There was, the land sloped up considerably.
Yeah. Right. And the requirements for avoiding grading and vegetation and removal are, are stricter in the National Seashore. And in the conditions for National Seashore special permit. So that, you know, yeah, ordinarily, just dig a hole and put the house in, but there's, there's more consideration in, in this one. And so you'd need to know exactly how much is really going to be disturbed and how much is going to be gone in order to answer the question of whether or not that's going to be consistent, retained to the extent practicable, final contours consistent with the existing terrain, both on and adjacent to the site.
Understood.
I have a question for you, Sharon, if I may.
Yes.
It's for the board. In the previous special permit, and then you had the court case with the abutters, and there was an agreement about what would go forward with special permits. Is that information relevant to this board? Do we need to?
Yes.
Yes, it is. We should, we should have that. That should be in our packages.
Yeah, I would like to have all that information.
We should have all that information.
What went wrong, who, what, where, when and why.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm really at a loss.
Yeah, maybe it's time for me to address this.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
First of all, I don't think a settlement agreement between the parties is really germane to the Board of Appeals' application of the bylaw to any particular front of it. But I'm certainly, I have no problem with providing copy of the agreement. I'll read to you right now what the agreement says relative to that particular condition.
But Ben, let me stop you just for a minute. What I, what I was missing, which you usually give us, is other cases on this property that we have, we have ruled on. So I wasn't so much looking for the agreement as I was looking for the 2013 appearance before us and the findings on that.
Sharon, if I may, we, we did file all the materials.
No, I don't, I don't have it in my packet.
Well, we did. I, we filed. I don't know whether it's in your packet or not, but I know that we
Okay. All right. So anyway, that, that was my question. So now go ahead though about the agreement.
In fact, I reviewed before the hearing, the, the package of materials that I filed with the board. We always file with the town clerk, two copies of the prior permitting materials.
Sure. I know. That's why I was surprised not to see it.
No, we, we filed. So, and, and just to address a couple of quick things.
Thank you.
You know, and I'm not going to get too heavy, because I think I see where this is going, and I think I know what information the board's looking for, and we'll provide it. But, you know, for the board to say that they need more time to study information prepared by an abutter when it's submitted by a letter the evening before the hearing puts us at a disadvantage. Not only my ability to review and respond to those, but the board doesn't even have the information. I think the board should hold a butter. And just so the board knows, when I filed this, I provided a courtesy copy to counsel simultaneous with the filing date, as they did with Lauren McKean. So it's not like I hid the ball on what we were doing. So I think, you know, for the board to say, they haven't read the letter yet, we should wait another month, does a disservice of the applicant that, that provides the materials. Secondly, the agreement itself, and I'll read this. It says, and this is, this is number three in the agreement, "Any future alterations or movement of the structures on the Beahan property will conform to wealthy zoning bylaws," comma, "and will be subject to Board of Appeals permitting process." The intention of that was that if there was going to be a further movement of the house, that the applicant would have to conform to the bylaw with regard to the permitting process and meeting the standard for the permitting. It didn't say, and it never intended to say, and I can tell you because I negotiated this agreement, that they couldn't move the house and couldn't come back and seek a variance or a special permit to relocate the house. So we'll provide that for the board. And then with regard to the Seashore's concerns about the location of a dumpster and some materials, if any of you went out there and looked at the property, there was a split rail fence on the right-hand side when you came in. It looked like somebody backed into it a couple of times. My understanding is that split rail fence is the midpoint of Ridgeway Road, meaning the, the area to the left of that, looking at the Atlantic Ocean, is owned by Susan Beahan. The area to the right of that is owned by the National Seashore, subject to the rights of all parties to use the way for whatever rights they use it for. Lauren had that fence put in specifically to identify where the Seashore's property ownership was. The improvements that are out there, that garbage cage is located in the Beahans' fee ownership of Ridgeway Road. It's not an encroachment on the Seashore. Now, it may be that there's some equipment. I didn't go out there and measure where it is. But, you know, certainly the applicant will, if there is something that's on the Seashore's property, will move it off of there. But that fence was meant specifically to delineate the ownership area. So there is no encroachment there that I'm aware of in terms of structures. So I do understand from the board what you're looking for in terms of some site plan clarity. And I'll try to get you some grading information, and maybe we're better off going out and having another site visit to really look at that corner of the property to see what, what we're talking about here. And, and I'll leave my comments there. I'm not going to argue the permit because I know we're coming back.
Right. Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Just could add two more things. Could, through, through you, could we make clear to Ms. Moore that we do need information on a more timely basis because we didn't get it. So
Yeah.
And it's complicated and we need that information. We need to be able to think about it and study it a little bit. Also, through you, Sharon, too. Ben, Zander, is there, is there a basement or a cellar under this building, this dwelling now?
Did Ben leave? Ben, is there, is there a basement now?
If I may, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm going to direct that to Susan Beahan. I know she's online. I have not been in that house to see what is in the lower level of that house. I don't know. Would you mind, would the chair be willing to recognize?
Sure. Ms. Beahan? Is there a basement in the existing dwelling?
No, it's on basically, I would say cinder block and it's a cinder block foundation, but with sand underneath it.
Okay.
So, Madam Chairman.
And I just wanted to make one more comment.
Sure.
The front house is my son and daughter-in-law's home. And that's the house they use. It is not a guest house. We do not rent. As everyone at the Cape knows, you get relatives you never knew you had. And those photographs, I would say, because Ms. Ebling's son came down to our property photographing a party, made everyone uncomfortable making comments to my two granddaughters. And we actually removed to call the police. So I feel a little bit that we've been really unfairly colored. It's actually a single woman that I am, and I live in my home. And my son and daughter-in-law, their children are all grown up. And they're all gainfully employed. So if we have a party of which obviously all those cars were probably there for, but I think as you visited the cottage yesterday, going into a major weekend, there was what? One car in the parking lot? I just find that when people color their, they're very upset. I, I, I understand that they're very upset. But I want to be sure we're clear in how we see things. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beahan.
Madam Chairman, can I just finish my last comment?
Yes, yes.
So I'm quickly scanning the narrative. So maybe I'm missing it. But if this is a dwelling that doesn't have a basement, and now it's going to have a basement, I really think I should have known that in the narrative. Because I, I just feel we have a sketchy understanding of what's going on. Thank you.
So I think Mr. Mrs. Ebling would like to, Elving, I'm sorry, would like to say one more thing.
Yeah. So a couple of things. So my son did not take those.
I really don't want to get into this neighborhood fight. You know, I, that's not really, I mean, you know, you, you guys may not like each other, but that's sort of not our problem. That's, you know, I don't, I don't want to get into that back and forth.
And I did not imply that there were renters. Those are
Yes.
families. Yes. And the, on the timeline, we do apologize. So the, we did not receive the package from Ben. He provided it to our previous attorney who has since left Nutter McLennan and Fish. And Ben, I don't, I don't know if you got a bounce back, but we did not get that package until well, very recently. And so we, we do apologize for the lateness, but, but we didn't have much time to, to put that letter together. And the last thing I want to mention relates to Ben's comment about the settlement agreement. We agree that the settlement agreement mentions the possibility of relocating the dwelling, but not in violation of zoning bylaws. And that's our issue. It's not that the dwelling cannot be relocated. It's simply that it can't be relocated in violation of zoning bylaws. And, and that's, that's what the, the settlement agreement sets forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think it's pretty clear, Ben, that we have to continue this.
Yeah, I just want to respond on one point if, if the chair will let me. It's impossible to locate that house in conformance with zoning bylaws.
Yes.
You know, you know, to argue that the intention was that the house can only be relocated, so it met 50 feet from away and 35 feet from the terrace lot line, you, you can't do it. And so, you know, again, I'll provide the settlement agreement. I don't think it has a bearing on what the board is looking at. I think the board has restricted itself to questions concerning what I intend to do for the board, and I'm going to ask for a continuance, Sharon, in one moment, is, is, is come back with a site plan that clarifies exactly what the structure is that's there now. What exactly the structure is that's going to be there when the work is done, exactly how it's going to be underpinned, if that's a word. And then, and then also I'll provide a, a construction protocol for how the work is going to be done. And then I'm going to see if I can provide for the board a clearer understanding of the topography of the lot and the work that's necessary to locate the structure with regard to the topography. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yep. That, and, and then you have provided to us, but we somehow didn't get, so we will want to see in that packet. Chris, I guess we gotta go at after-town, town clerk about that, about the prior permit.
And I'll just, I've got it scanned. I'll just, I'll email it to Christine and she
Okay, because we, you know, we usually look at our old permits and
I'm, I'm happy to.
Okay. Is there anything else anybody wants before I, before we ask for the continuance?
With that, with, with the addition of a basement, I'd like to know how high that's going to be.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Yep.
Not only the height change with the addition of the basement, but the height change with relation to the topography. Because it's higher, because it'll be on the foundation, but it's also going to be higher because it'll be on a higher part of the lot.
Right.
I think the, yeah, I could, what I can provide the board is, is an overall height of the ridge above mean sea level. And I can always, and also provide the board with, with, with the height of the structure above the average grade existing and proposed, so that you can see both how high the structure is relative to itself and how, how high it is relative to just, for example, the elevies looking out of the window.
Right. And, and then, of course, we will add to it the letters from Ms. Moore and Lauren that we need to have in our packet, the additional letter.
So with, with all that being said, once the board has questions, I will, I will ask the board if it will be possible to grant a continuance of the matter.
Yes. Yes. How much time do you want?
I think we need 30 days. Enough time to prepare the plan and submit it.
Yeah, I think so, too. So that means why is the piece of paper that I want never here? Here it is. We're at
You're looking for Sharon?
I'm, I'm going to our meeting dates. We're at the 25th, so you want to continue to September 22nd or to October 13th? You might want to be October 13th, and let me tell you why. September 22nd is the final date for the Lawrence Road 40B.
Well, Susan, you said October 23rd?
No, no, I said either September 22nd or October 13th.
October 13th is fine.
Yeah. We might be actually done with Lawrence Road at that point. Okay, I need a motion to continue until October 13th. Okay, and I need a second.
A second.
Okay, all in favor, Trevor?
Aye.
Manny? Manny, unmute Manny.
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And Andy?
Aye.
Hi. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you all. Board, we have minutes from the 14th of July, the 4th of August, and the 11th of August. Is that right? Chris, those are the, the four, the three?
Yes.
Okay. So I need, can we just do them all at once?
Yes.
Okay, good. I need a motion to accept all those minutes.
So moved.
Okay, and I need a second.
A second.
All right, all in favor, Manny?
Aye.
Trevor?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And Sharon, aye. Our next meeting is the, the September 8th. I want to begin with a brief, you know, it's, we need to reorganize the board. And if anybody wants to do a palace coup and depose me, I'm happy to be deposed.
Fat chance.
And so we have to do that. And I also want to have a little bit of a conversation about the role of the board and the role of the secretary vis a vis applicants and the building inspector and the need to not be put in a position of having to advise people. So just that for September 8th. You can put that on the, on this as administrative business at the beginning, Chris, and that'll, that'll do it. Yeah. And other than that, I need a motion to adjourn. Second? Aye. All right. Thank you all. You've done, all in favor? You've all done yeoman's work. Hopefully it won't be quite so long next time.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. All right. Chris, I think I just have one one set of findings to send you.
Okay.
After all of that, because two of them were, were withdrawn and one is continued, and then the other was the um Yeah, two withdrawn, one continued, one, one, one findings and, and one that's again continued. So, yeah, I'll just send you the one findings and
Good deal.
And we're done.
And I'm going to go and check my email. I, yesterday afternoon, I was really bogged down. Sounds like I always make mistakes or make excuses, but I was really bogged down with getting the decisions mailed up. And last I checked my mail, I think it was like at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So I'm going to check that. That's, that isn't right, that we are getting a lot of this stuff so late.
Yeah, yeah, it isn't. We're just, and I don't understand why we weren't getting the other permit from, from the town.
Well, you know what? You, I can explain that, I think.
Okay, I think we could turn off the recording, by the way, because we're adjourned.